I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 9:38 on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. Welcome to the East Montpelier Annual Meeting, Town Meeting. I have just a couple of housekeeping measures. The Planning Commission has a table set up at the back for their survey. Erica Zimmerman is taking care of the table, so if you haven't filled out the survey, please do so. There she comes. Good to see everybody this morning. This is town meeting. I was just doing a little history research the other day and once again was struck by when the king was imposing all kinds of onerous laws on the colonies. Back at that time, it was Western Mass in Southern Vermont. The most important thing that people had was town meeting. This is 1761, 1773. And when the onerous acts came in, which were terrible, it was the... Oh, quiet in the back, please? Can I have some quiet in the back, please? Thank you. The thing that lit the fuse of the American Revolution was when the king banned town meeting. That was the straw that broke the camel's back. So it's good to have everybody here today. Starting on a sad note, we've had a lot of townspeople pass away this year, and I'd like to take a couple of minutes, a moment of silence for that. Not a couple of minutes, but a moment of silence. All lives are important, and a couple of people in particular passed away. The first being Norma Raymond at the year of... Was it 101?
Hundred and a half.
Hundred and a half, who was...
Hundred and one and a half.
Hundred and one and a half. And I don't think she ever missed a town meeting, really. And then Tommy was just reminding me that Brian Lusignan, who served the town for a long time, passed away this past year. And a number of our close friends. I'll even mention the neighbor, Tom Kirchen, which was sad for all of us. And also Ellen told me this morning she had heard that Rob Chickering had passed away, which was... He also served this town. But there are a number of folks who passed away, and we should always think about them. But for them, and in particular, let's just have a brief moment of silence. And thank you very much. We will move on. We do have four young gentlemen who have the microphones. They are in student leadership. Arrow Waring is here, and Patrick Paquette, Ethan Grandfeld, and Vincent Markham. They will be running around with the microphones and thank them for their leadership at the elementary school and for what they're doing today. So the first item is Article 1. To elect the following officers, which is by Australian ballot, but if anyone who is running is present, they can stand and be recognized. State law provides that there can be no speechifying if the voting for officers happens in the same building where the election is taking place. So on page three, we have the officers and offices being moderator for one year, Michael Dwayne, right here. Select Board member for three years, Carl Ettnair, is running. A select board member for two years, Scott Hess is here. A lister for three years, Jez Harrington is Jez in the audience this morning. Don't see him right now. An auditor for three years is Deb Fillion. Deb is often here. I don't see her. She's running for auditor. Planning Commission Kim Watson. Glenn Wayant is running for Planning Commissioner. Erica Zimmerman, who's in the back, is running for Planning Commission. These are three-year terms. Two-year terms. Selena Barton, is she present? Also Renee Carpenter, is she present? No. So those folks are running. It's Australian ballot. The polls are open from 7:00 to 7:00. Article 2, to hear the report of the town officers. And Chairman Gardner is going to present the report of the select board. Seth?
Hello, folks. The select board report is on page 14. So I'll go through it really quickly, but stop me at any time if you've got any questions. It seems kind of boring to me, but maybe people will be interested. So one of the big things that's happened in the town, you may have noticed, we have some new staff down in the town office. We have Jen Devine, who's our new town administrator. Heather Pagel, who was our municipal coordinator, and Kevin Thompson is our zoning administrator. It's taken us a little while to get things in order in our town office, but we've really got a good team working there now. They work together really well. Things get done well, and we're really happy with the people we have in our town office at this point. It just took us a while to get it all put together. We had longstanding people leave the town office, and finally, we got... It takes a while to get staff in place that works well together and comes together as a team. So we're really happy with what we've done there. And the other big thing in our town that's going on now is a town garage. So that's a big project, and we actually have people working on it every day right now. There's weekly meetings. There's lots of back and forth. Are there any questions about the town garage? It's actually a big project. So we've actually rented a temporary garage on Coddling Road so we can take down the old one, and that's happening very soon. What's your question?
How is the progress? Are you happy with it?
Yes.
The question was, how is the progress and is the board happy with it?
We are happy with it. Moving forward, getting a temporary garage so we could take down the old one was a big, big step. It actually saved us a lot of time and a lot of money. So making that decision and moving forward and luckily finding a new location for the temporary garage was really lucky. So we're really, really happy with that. It's just a lot of details to be worked out. There's weekly... Every Friday morning, there's a meeting. Sometimes I can go, sometimes I can't. Sometimes Tom goes. Town Administrator attends also. It's usually by Zoom, but every week, there's a meeting. And so it's on our agenda at all times. So it's a big project, but it's moving forward well. So that's the report update on the town garage. Then there's some road projects. Does anybody have any question about the Horn of the Moon or anything like that? Sodom Pond? I mean, these are projects that we work, that our town administrator works on every day, plus our road forum. And it goes through FEMA, which is a convoluted process. But the good thing is, we hope we're going to get reimbursed for the money that we've spent. With the turmoil in Washington, we're not sure we're going to get our money back, but we are hoping to. So any questions on those? The one thing I will say... Question here?
Do we have some sort of backup plan?
In case we don't get the money back?
Is the federal money...
No.
The question was, is there any backup plan?
We've already done the projects, but the way FEMA works, it's reimbursement. So the projects are done, and once they get completed, you have to put the paperwork into FEMA like multiple times, and then you should get the money back. But we do know that in Washington, various funding streams are frozen. So we're keeping our fingers crossed. But if we don't get reimbursed, we don't get reimbursed.
I did talk to that...
Sure.
Yeah, there is no backup plan that we've talked about, as Seth said. However, numerous organizations and individuals have been successful in suing the administration to get them to turn on spigots that they have turned off. The courts have said, yeah, you need to turn on those spigots again. So if push comes to shove, we will be in touch with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It's a statewide organization that all the municipalities in the state are part of. We're all in the same boat here, and we'll figure out what to do going forward.
Okay, so moving through the road projects. The... I see the only thing that's going to touch your... affect you lives mostly is the townwide reappraisal. But that's not going to happen for two years because they're so far behind. So everyone's houses, properties will be reappraised to get them back to a realistic value, because what's happened is our homes are selling for a lot more money than they're appraised for. It doesn't really mean your taxes are going to go up. It just means that you're... The value of everybody's place was more realistic. So it doesn't mean that you pay more taxes, because really, you only pay a finite amount of taxes because it's all determined by our budget. So that will happen, but it's going to take a little while because everyone's so far behind. So any other questions on the select board report? Yes, sir?
Can you go... Play that back? Thank you. Good job, buddy.
Hey, Seth. I was wondering if you could kind of go through the steps that... With the town garage, I mean, when is it going to be demolished? What's the timeframe for when it'll be completed?
Yep. Okay, so what happened was, we discovered that if we left the garage there and tried to work around it, that it was going to be more expensive, and we were going to have to make some compromises on the design. And it was going to put off the start date for a couple of months, just because we couldn't get the stormwater permit. Seriously. But we don't need the stormwater permit if we take down the old garage. So it moved up the start date two months. So we're... Right now, the goal was to get out of the old garage by March 15th, which is coming up. I'm not sure we're going to hit that. And then we're looking to get the old garage taken down as soon as possible after we get out of there. So the start date should be by 1st of May or end of April. That's what we're looking at. Everything is designed, but there are a few details that we're working on every week. Just getting every... You know, where do you put the vents, for instance? Oh, you don't put the vent right over the door. So those are the kind of details that we work on every week. You know, should there be a step in the concrete when the overhead door comes down? Should it be flat on the concrete, or should there be a step in the concrete when the door comes? Those are the kind of details we're working on all the time. So it's going to start soon. And the reason it is, is because we've got the temporary garage location. So that's really good. And completion should be November. Yep, pretty much. So we insisted that for winter, we have to have a garage. So that's... We moved up the timeframe, got the temporary garage. Things look good. Okay. Any other questions?
That's my line. Any other questions?
Oh. Oh, we got somebody wanting to talk. This guy wants to talk all the time. There you go.
I just want to make a quick comment, that the select board works hard and diligent. But many of you do know, and others may not know, Seth does an unbelievable job. He does more work than the four of us. He's always there, and I just want to make sure everybody knows that he's irreplaceable right now, so thank you, Seth.
That's really embarrassing.
But very true.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. We don't... We do these volunteer jobs because we either want to give back to the community, or we like doing it. We want things to go well for the townspeople that we serve, and this is why we do it. And it has gratification when you see things go well. So that's why... This is why we do it every day. So anyway, thank you.
That concludes the select... Whoop, Carl.
Doesn't quite conclude yet.
Oh, yeah. Are you going to mention the USDA?
I am.
Thanks.
So the select board almost always, in my experience, acts through acts. We appoint people to be on boards. We pass budgets. We organize a town meeting. We do all these other official things that we do as a select board. I don't remember... I've been on since 2011. I don't remember that we have ever taken the occasion to just make a statement ourselves. We did so last night, and I wanted to share it with you. This is a unanimous statement from the select board. It's an open letter to the Vermont Congressional delegation. Dear Senators Sanders, Welch, and Representative Ballant, thank you for representing our interests in Washington and the interest of continuing a stable democratic republic under the U.S. Constitution. We are writing to inform you of one way in which the current chaos in Washington has affected our ability to look out for the best interests of the people of East Montpelier. In November, the town voters approved a $4.9 million bond to finance the construction of a new municipal garage. The building will not only provide a good structure to house our road equipment and for our road crew to work in, but it will also be highly energy efficient and fitted with sufficient net metered solar photovoltaic panels to provide all the electricity the building will need for its heating and other needs. To get the best deal for voters on the bond, we applied both to the Vermont Bond Bank and USDA Rural Development. However, after January 20th, it became clear to us that working with any federal agency could be risky. We've seen so many reports of behavior that appears to be arbitrary and capricious, including firings of long-term employees who have recently been promoted and stopping payments on contracts for works already completed. As it turned out, the interest rates were lower through the Vermont Bond Bank, so our interests in keeping borrowing costs down and entering a stable loan agreement were aligned. But we and other towns and organizations in Vermont have relied on USDA rural development loans in the past, and we are keenly disappointed that this option is no longer available as something we can place our confidence in. This is a small issue compared to everything you are facing in Washington and we are facing as a country. We are sharing this because small stories can help make sense of the impact of large changes. Please do what you can to maintain a stable democratic republic under the U.S. Constitution and the rule of law with regards the East Montpelier Select Board.
I believe that concludes the select board's report with addendum. Anything else? We'll move on to the next article, but before that, I was looking at the list of folks on our vital statistics who did pass away this last year, and I was so struck by it that in addition to the folks we mentioned before, let me just kindly mention, and this is on page 58, Michelle Murphy, Ken Liebertoff, Wayne Hamilton, Pauline Shepherd, Donna Stacey, Sylvia Franks, Justin Orr, Jane Kahn, Marjorie Redman, Richard Sanborn, Josh Scribner, Pamela Pikel, Howard Seben, Edna Corliss, Tom Kirchen, Sandy Holt, Sandy Flannery, and Stephen Larkin. So we're going to move on to Article 3, which is, shall the town raise the sum of $2,469,200... Somebody's phone's going off. Let me turn that down, please. ...$68 proposed by the select board for laying out and repairing highways and other business. Now, this is to be voted by Australian ballot from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. However, since it's not involving the election of a candidate, there can be discussion, questions, or responses to that. So before we move on, does anyone have any questions, comments, discussion regarding Article 3, which is the town budget on the Australian ballot? Any questions or comments? Yes?
Just to say a shout out to the local...
Yeah. Thank you, Renee. Good point. Thanks. Before we move on to Article 4, our state representative Ella Chapin is here, who represents East Montpelier and Middlesex. And Ella would like to take a couple of minutes to say a few words, and I think maybe take any questions. And she'll be here after the meeting formally concludes as well. But Ellen, come on up.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to come over here. Good morning. I'm Ella Chapin. I've been the representative. It's my third year now, second biennium. Thanks for your vote. I wanted to just share a little bit about me, a little bit about a couple of policy issues, but be pretty brief. I did send out a lengthy... Well, I made public a lengthy report that most people hopefully saw in Front Porch... A link to in Front Porch Forum. If not, I can help you get to the report today while I'm around. Feel free to come find me, or you can find it on Front Porch Forum. But so I'm going to try and be brief, but there's of course a lot happening at the state level, as there is at local and national levels right now. Just a little bit about me. I live in East Montpelier. I represent East Montpelier and Middlesex. We have about 150... Not about. We have 150 state representatives. Everybody represents about 5,000 people on the House side, and we sit on one committee. So we primarily end up focusing a lot and digging into policy on one particular topic. Right now, I sat on the Judiciary Committee for this past biennium, and now I sit on the Environment Committee. Senators, we have 30 senators. They represent more like a county worth of constituents. Our senators are Ann Cummings, Andy Perchlick, and Ann Watson, all of whom I hope you also reach out to in addition to reaching out to me. They're not always as great about getting right back because they have a lot more constituents and a lot more email. But they are... Particularly Ann Cummings is the chair of the Finance Committee on the Senate side, and Andy Perchlick is the chair of Appropriations on the Senate side. And so I hope as you think and talk about public policy, particularly education policy, that you reach specifically out to the two of them in their roles. And Ann Watson is now the chair of Natural Resources Committee. So we have some really great... Our senators are in some really great positions to have impact on the Senate side. I'm just going to touch on public education and education finance. These are, of course, our top priorities after a very difficult year last year and multiple years with property taxes and a lot of school boards really struggling with making changes to address school education quality and address declining populations, declining student enrollment. So we are really looking at potential significant transformation to our education policy. The governor put out a very robust transformation proposal. The actual details of that 170-page bill just came out this past week. So really, the beginning of the legislative session this year has been hearing about the governor's proposal on education transformation, trying to get at the details of that. Not having something in writing until last week has been challenging for policymakers, but we do now have something in writing, and it is available publicly. And I think over the next few weeks, you'll see the legislature shift or the relevant committees shift to working on some of our own ideas and proposals and taking up and transforming bills. I'm not sure how far we'll get on transformational change for the public education system by what's called crossover week, which is about midway, where bills have to go from the House to the Senate or the Senate to the House in order to actually pass this year. So only a few weeks from now is that crossover deadline. We can work on policy over two years, so we can still work on bills later this session that could then go over and become law next year. But in order to become law this year, they have to cross from the House to the Senate or the Senate to the House, basically by the end of March. So feel free to reach out to me on public education. Many of you are. I think the tax... The property tax piece is something we're very committed to, and I don't think we'll have that much trouble ensuring we don't see a huge increase in property taxes. That said, on average for the state, that said, every town is really different, and how that works is very nuanced. Not very many people in the state fully understand it, but it does mean that there's variation from town to town in that impact. And so while the average could go up 2% or not at all, that might... That doesn't guarantee that every town has that same experience, and some might go up and some people's property taxes are likely to go down this year. I wanted to mention in particular that I have a survey that was also in that French Porch Forum posting about public education that the House Speaker's Office has put out to gather information at this point on a variety of topics related to public education and education finance. I have a poster with me today with a thing that you can scan and take the survey right away or whenever at your leisure. So we're going to be collecting those responses over the next few weeks. I will see everybody's responses from my district. The Committees of Jurisdiction in the House will see the responses for the whole state, and the Speaker's Office will have that information also. So that's a great way to give some input at this stage in the game on that topic. I just briefly wanted to mention that in that email also are some information about the federal... How we're at the state level trying to track and understand and to do the best we can to prepare for federal impacts of federal administration choices that get made. It's fast and furious. As you know, the governor is doing some things. The Treasurer's Office is doing some things and set up a whole task force to track federal impacts. The AG's Office, the Attorney General's Office is participating in many suits to, as the select board mentioned, you know, try and hold the federal government accountable to the Constitution and the laws that govern how funding moves, for example. And then legislative leadership and particularly our Commerce Committee are really looking at how we can best prepare. I just want to say that I think we all understand that... Well, first I'll say that the state's budget includes... A third of it is federal funding, and particularly on things like Medicaid and other support systems. And we know these federal tax... Federal impacts of removing funding that we're all expecting and already anticipating is going to hurt our most vulnerable Vermonters, and we all know that. We cannot... We can't replace a third of the state's budget with state resources. So if we really lose a lot of federal resources in the middle of a fiscal year or for future years, I just want people to understand, it's not something that state has... Like, our rainy day fund can't just cover that. So we are looking at tools that we have, particularly the courts, to take those kinds of actions to try and ensure we're protecting Vermonters. There's more details about some of that in the email I sent out and the report that I made public. Other big policy areas we're really working on at the state, you know, there is a lot of housing being constructed in certain areas. We're really continuing to really work on housing. We're continuing to work on healthcare, which is another area where we can't do as much at the state level as we'd like to because so much of it is federal policy. But we are making some big changes to healthcare policy, and some of that is detailed in the report that's available. And there's many other policy issues we're still working on, but we are generally this session passing fewer bills, focusing more on these biggest issues, particularly public education. So I just wanted to share that. And I also just want to say, you know, I try and get back to everyone pretty regularly as quickly as possible, but during the session, sometimes I get backed up in my responses, but I do read every email and get every text or voicemail that comes into me pretty timely. So if you're trying to reach out to me about a particular bill that's being taken up, I'm listening. I might not respond, like in those few days. I try to, but not always possible. So thank you all, and feel free to reach out anytime and come see me after the meeting if you would like. Thanks.
Article 4. Shall the town authorize all property taxes for fiscal year 2026 to be paid to the Treasurer without discount in two installments? The first due on Monday, November 17th, 2025, and the second installment will be due on a before-Friday, May 15th, 2026. Is there a motion to adopt Article 4? Anybody? There's a motion to adopt Article 4? Rachel Grossman in the back, is there a second to that? Your name, please?
Marion Hanson.
Marion Hanson, thank you. Any questions, comments, discussions about Article 4? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The article is adopted. Article 5. Shall the town raise the sum of $54,558 for Kellogg-Hubbard Library for the support of Kellogg-Hubbard Library to be voted by Australian ballot? Not a candidate, so any questions, discussions regarding Article 5, Kellogg-Hubbard Library, which is on the Australian ballot? which is on the Australian ballot? Don't see anyone on that one, so that's on the ballot. Article six, shall the town raise the sum of $4,700 for the Four Corners School Association for operating expenses during fiscal year 26? Is there a motion to adopt Article six? Nona Estrin, second by Hillary Farrington. Any questions or discussions regarding Article six for the Four Corners School? Amount? Seeing none. Oh, Rachel? Yes.
I just wanted to take a minute to recognize-
You're gonna have to get a microphone there. Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Hobie Guyon, our fearless leader at the Four Corners Schoolhouse, who, who just got us through the process of mitigating the mold issue at the schoolhouse.
Yeah.
Looks like I don't have to say anything more. Thank you, Hobie.
The fearless leader would like to speak.
Especially just to bring everybody up to some, on what has happened and what will continue to happen at the Four Corners Schoolhouse. About two years ago, we ran into the wall that was this mold issue, and we began searching for grant money. We were lucky to receive the maximum amount from the Vermont Arts Council, $30,000. We were furthermore lucky to receive backing from the town and matching that. And we were additionally lucky in that many of you contributed to a GoFundMe to raise an additional $10,000 that we had as a, for any extra or overcharging. But in the end, we came down to being about $2,000 under what was advertised. That savings combined with the $10,000 gave us the room to recently repaint the entire interior, and will further allow us to repaint the exterior in the coming years. So I'd really like to extend appreciation towards the Vermont Arts Council, to the town of East Montpelier, and to all of you folks who support the town. I also would be remiss if I did not point out several others who were key to the success of our little campaign, including this gentleman right here, Andy Shapiro, offered- offered invaluable expertise and oversight for, from beginning really to end. Another gentleman, Dave Hanson, offered- Did a wonderful job on the ventilation. He was one of many East Montpelier-based contractors who worked on it, and the others, who I don't see right away here, but the others are Tony Raul and Premier Heating and AC, Robert Brown, who runs Green Home Solutions and did the actual mold remediation. And then we had some out-of-towners, but they were all right too. We had Dexter Electric from Berry, and we had Murphy's Cell Tech from St. Johnsbury. So they were all great to work with, and I appreciate your support and their workmanship. And last thing would be that there is still a bit of mold remediation to be done. We've got, we had put off the entryway until later to see if that was going to be something that kind of worked out on its own. That hasn't happened, so as soon as winter breaks, and I'm recently sure it will break at some point, we will be back under the schoolhouse and taking care of the mold problem. And so hopefully by, I would hope by end of May, we'll have everything completely done. So again, thank you all.
Yeah, Scott?
This one? Okay. Andy Shapiro is also on, for the garage. He has been, done, doing an unbelievable job helping us out with the environmental stuff and efficiency, and we're all elected working on it, but I just wanted to shout out for tremendous job this month. A tireless job again, so thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Anything else on Article six, the Four-
I don't have any more acknowledgements right now.
You're sure?
I'm pretty sure. I might come up with something else.
All right. Anything else on Article six for the Four Corners? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Article six, $4,700 for the Four Corners, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The article is adopted. By the way, the sound system is working very well. Colin McCaffrey, thank you very much. Article seven, shall the town raise the sum of $10,000 for the East Montpelier signpost to provide for the production and mailing of six issues for each East Montpelier resident during fiscal year 2026? Is there a motion to adopt Article seven? Edie Miller, is there a second? Ann Stanton, any comments, questions, discussions regarding Article seven for the signpost? Nona Estrin.
I can see a show of hands. I see the drawing all the way through. Maybe not the first few, but I can see. How many people do that sometimes? Where would we be without them?
Yes. Just state your name.
Micah Ball.
Micah.
If you don't receive it, the mailhouse can be used.
You talk to the, you talk to the person with the camera. There you go. Any other questions or comments, Ann?
Do you have a microphone?
Microphone, where's the microphone, folks? Hello, microphone pages, young man right there? Oh, there's only one mic? Oh, I thought there was more than one mic. They're running it up. Here we go.
I would just like to thank the town and all of you individuals for the support you've shown and for the enthusiasm. I also wanted to mention that we've been going on now for 30-plus years, 31 years, and many of us volunteers have been going on for 31 years. So I would like to ask if you would be interested in serving as a volunteer, especially if you're under the age of 70? And because we are on the ballot, we couldn't have a table, which we've had in the past. So if you have ideas for stories, or if you would like to volunteer to write a story or something like that, I have a yellow tablet here. You can find me here, and I'll write down your name. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article seven concerning the signpost? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article seven, $10,000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The article is adopted. Article eight, shall the town raise the sum of $4,000 for East Montpelier Trails for the enhancement, development, and administration and maintenance of the network during fiscal year 2026? Is there a motion to adopt Article eight? Loring Starr, seconded by Zach Sullivan. Any questions, discussions, comments regarding Article eight on the trails?
Just in the spirit of thanking people, the people who work on the trails are fabulous. And if you've hiked any of those trails, it's wonderful. And I just wanted to put a plug in for the workdays. Paul and I helped out Mary Stone once. It wasn't an official workday, but she just said, hey, you wanna go work on the trail? And we spent about an hour and a half maybe. And it was great. And the next time we went on that trail, when we got to that stretch of trail, it was like, oh, we did this trail, this is our part of the trail. So it's just really a lot of fun, and the people who do it are wonderful, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brock, would you say a few words, please? You can use this microphone if you'd like. As a former moderator, you know how to use it.
Thank you, Mr. Dwayne. I'm Richard Brock. I'm here on behalf of the board, which is largely here. I see a number of board members. Our information is on page 78 of your book. I will not go over it, but I must again say what I said last year. We very much appreciate the generous support of all of you, year after year after year. Thank you very, very much.
Is there, are there any other questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article eight? Nona Estrin.
I just wanna remind you that the trails are now going on 40 years old. Trails are going on 40 years old now, and I want to remind you that it's really easy to get money for new trails, new buildings, new anything. It's impossible to get money for upkeep, except through the generosity of a supporting town. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments or discussion regarding Article eight, the trails? Mary Stone.
Thank you. I want to point out that there is a flyer that describes the work that we did in 2024 and the projects that are on tap for this year. And we will be looking for volunteers. And as Rachel said, thank you, Rachel. You can use the trails and love them, but once you've worked on them, you do take on a new kind of ownership, and that's a really good feeling I want you all to experience. We also have an opening coming up on our board. Our wonderful Treasurer would like, has a big birthday coming up and would like to retire from those duties. That's Richard Brock. Thank you, Richard. And not from the board, I will say, but from the duties of the Treasurer. It's a pretty simple job. It's not, we, we have a small budget, but it's an important one, and we're looking for anyone who would like to get involved in, in that way. You don't have to come to meetings, it's nice to do it, but Richard would work with anybody who has the interest and hopefully a little experience with numbers. So that's, that's it. Oh, yep, the flyer. Make sure you take a flyer, has a great map on the back.
Thanks, Mary. Any other questions or discussions, comments regarding Article eight? If not, those in favor of adopting Article eight, $4,000 for the Trails Inc., please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The article is adopted. Article nine, shall the town raise the sum of $9,700 for the Montpelier Senior Activities Center for operating expenses during fiscal year 2026? Is there a motion to adopt Article nine? Marion Hanson and Edie Miller seconding that motion. Any discussions or questions regarding Article nine? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Article nine, $9,700, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The article is adopted. Article 10, shall the town raise the sum of $7,500 for Twin Valley Seniors Inc. for the operating expenses during fiscal year 2026? Article 10. Is there a motion to adopt Article 10? And there is Doug Kivett-Kilar. Andy Christensen with the second. Any discussion or questions regarding Article 10, Twin Valley Seniors? Questions, discussions, comments? If not, all those in favor of adopting Article 10, $7,500 for Twin Valley, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The article is adopted. Article 11, shall the town raise the sum of $6,500 for Central Vermont Home, Health, and Hospice for operating expenses during 2026? Is there a motion to adopt Article 11? Becky Reed, is there a second for that, sir? Carl Benson, seconded by Carl Benson. Article 11, any questions, comments, discussion regarding Article 11? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Article 11, $6,500 for Central Vermont Home, Health, and Hospice, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Article 11 is adopted. Article 12, shall the town raise the sum of $7,834 for the support of rural community transportation to provide services to residents of the town of East Montpelier? It's a portion of the total cost of service, which will be supported by appropriations from other towns, state, and federal funds and rider fees. Is there a motion to adopt Article 12 for the transportation? Ginny Callen, seconded by Selena Moore? Yes. Any discussion or questions, comments regarding Article 12 for the RCT? Oh, Edie, sorry.
I have a phone.
Here's the mic. Thanks.
I'm just not, I live on the other side of town, so I'm not familiar with this. Does this have a lot of ridership? I'm just curious what kind of activity goes on.
Can anyone answer?
So ridership, is anybody here from RCT? I guess not. So they, they came into the Select Board, and ridership was fairly stable, is that correct? But unfortunately, it hasn't really had more ridership from year to year. It's pretty much the same. But with the price of gas being so cheap, public transportation is not taking off like it really should. So it, I mean, it's a worthy cause to be promoting mass transportation or public transportation, but the ridership has not increased dramatically. It's because fossil fuel's too cheap.
And, and also, as I mentioned, a lot of the offices now, people are working from home.
Yeah. Yeah.
Tommy was saying that one of the other factors is that with a lot of state offices closed, people working from home, there's just not a lot of traffic.
But, but they still have some ridership. I mean, it's stable. But, you know, I personally would like to see more people riding, taking advantage of mass transportation, but Americans are wedded to their cars, and when gas is, you know, relatively cheap, we don't see people, you know, adopting bus transportation. I don't know. I, I'm not in favor of gas getting cheaper and cheaper, even though I use a lot on my farm, and it hurts me a lot. It hurts me a lot when fuel goes up, but in the long run, fuel should be a lot more expensive. And that's my, that's my take on it.
I can, I can add something to that, too.
Yeah, good.
So the report from Rural Community Transportation is on page 84 of the Town Meeting Report, and connected with that on the next page, 85, is Green Mountain Transit's report. RCT says that for East Montpelier residents, RCT operates the US2 commuter bus linking St. Johnsbury and Montpelier while providing connections to Burlington via the Link Service from GMT. In the last fiscal year, this route provided 7,601 rides at a cost of $341,472. And this, this request from, from them for $7,834, they say, has remained unchanged from previous years. I think this is, between the two of them, it's stayed the same since they first started asking for it 10 years ago or so, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Can't, can't hear you. There's a mic right there with one of our pages.
A lot of individuals that ride from St. Johnsbury or Danville, in that it's really convenient to be able to stop in East Montpelier and assist in that way as well.
Thanks, Kim. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Ruben Bennett, right up in the, right up in the front here, please.
Thank you. I just want to vocally support the idea that we are very mindful about messing with any social safety nets right now. This is an incredibly difficult and dangerous time. And I think this is something that we should all be keeping in the back of our minds. There is a lot of danger for folks at the lower end of the socioeconomic spectrum. And this administration is going out of its way to really take away social safety nets. So even though maybe a lot of people don't, it's not a lot of people that are using the buses, it is generally folks who are already not in a great spot. And so if their car breaks down, that might be the difference between somebody losing their job or not losing their job. So let's please continue to support public transportation. Thank you.
Any other questions or, oop, yeah. Any other questions or comments regarding Article Twelve, RCT? If not, all those in favor of adopting Article Twelve, $7,834 for the support of RCT for the upcoming fiscal year, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Article Twelve is adopted. Article Thirteen, shall the town raise the sum of $1,499 as its Green Mountain Transit, Green Mountain Transit portion for the fiscal year 2026? Of the annual ongoing cost, the commuter bus along Route Two was serviced into East Montpelier. Is there a motion to adopt Article Thirteen? Yes. State your name, please. Selena Moore. Is there a second? Michael Dworkin. Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article Thirteen? Mr. Maury?
Appropriation for GMT, and I'm wondering why it shows up on twice. Why are we voting on two different amounts, not one?
Can anyone answer Mr. Maury's question?
Yeah, that's, we knew this would be a question. It's not a duplication. It's a different service. So the service that you're going to vote on is for the public bus service, Article Thirteen. The one on Article Fourteen, that is for when they come to your house to give you a ride somewhere. Okay, so it's a different aspect of the bus service. All right? Even though it's exactly the same amount, last year it was a different, it was thirteen hundred and something. It versus fourteen ninety-nine. But it's a coincidence that they're both the same figure. It's not a duplication. It's Because it's a different arm of the, of transportation. It's not the same service. It's a completely different service. It's the bus, the small bus that comes to your house to give you a ride to the doctor. It's not the public bus that goes to the parking lot and picks up people and takes them to St. John's. Okay? So it's a different arm of the service.
Carl?
Yeah, I believe also part of the historical answer to your, your last question as to why they're not consolidated is because if memory serves me correctly, RCT was not involved in the public bus service appropriation when it originally came to us.
Originally?
Yeah. So it was later split out and then kept as separate articles in that section of the ballot. Whereas this come-to-your-house system that Seth described, that you can read about on page eighty-nine of the Town Report down at the bottom of the page for Green Mountain Transit, that has been part of the Funding Request Study Committee's assignment for, for years.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article Thirteen? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Article Thirteen, $1,499 for Green Mountain Transit, please indicate by saying aye. While those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen, which shows up on page ten of your Town Report, is the Funding Request Study Committee list of thirty-two items for a total of $22,774. Is there a motion to adopt Article Fourteen? Zach Sullivan, seconded by Mary Stone. Any questions or discussion or comments regarding Article Fourteen? Yes, sir. Just state your name, sorry.
I'm Ken Hertz. I just want to report that GMT needs volunteer drivers. I did volunteer driving three mornings a week. A friend did volunteer driving one day of the week. If you have availability, if you're able to drive, call them and tell them that you could be a volunteer driver.
Thank you, Ken.
That's for the bus that comes to the house. That's for the bus that comes to people's houses and gives them rides to the doctor, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, right, right. It's not for the big bus that drives to St. Johnsbury or whatever.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article Fourteen? Yes, just state your name, sorry. Kate? Ruddle, yeah. Here comes a mic. Yeah.
Thank you. My question is, how do you come to these numbers? So, because like certain organizations have a lot more than others?
Is there, somebody from the, I think there might be somebody from the Funding Committee can explain these different bolded numbers on the right-hand side. Paul Erbaum is back there. Could someone run Paul a mic, a microphone, please, from Kate? Okay, thanks. Back to Paul, Red Vest. Thank you.
Hi. On the Town Website, the applications, application forms for each of these organizations, it has been posted. And those detail not only the requests, but what these organizations each do, and especially how many East Montpelier residents are served by their, their services. So you can get all those details on the Town Website. I'll be glad to answer any questions about any particular organizations, to the extent my memory allows.
Add to that, I think the question was, why are the amounts different? They're different because they ask for different amounts. Every organization asks for a certain amount of money. The Funding Request Committee vets those requests and generally gives them what they want most of the time. So the reason they're different is because they ask for different amounts.
Any other, Ginny Callen, Article Fourteen?
I'm on the committee with Paul, and we have two other members, and we would love to have some other people join us. It's not a big commitment. The first time, you have to read a lot of grants, and then you get used to them, because the same groups pretty much come in every year. And we meet in the fall and go through and hear and learn a lot about the services that are being provided to our community. And many of these groups, it's really impressive what, what they are doing for all of our, our residents, not only in East Montpelier, but in the area. So let us know if you have a little bit of time in the fall and would like to join us.
Thanks, Ginny. Any other questions or comments or discussion regarding Article Fourteen or any of the subcategories therein? Seeing none, hearing none. Oh, Charles, did you have your hand up? You okay? No, no, I thought the other Charles, Charlie. I thought you had your hand up. Sorry. Article Fourteen, seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor of Article, of adopting Article Fourteen for the sum of $22,774, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Article Fourteen is adopted. Is Erin Clark here from the Food Committee? She was, she's probably in the kitchen. She wanted to say a couple of things. Well, will you, okay, Erica's gonna get her. Thanks. And before we end, so Ella, you're gonna be here for a while afterwards? Okay. So Article Fifteen, to transact any other business that may properly come before the meeting. Andy Christensen, do you have other business that properly comes before the meeting? Okay. Get a microphone, please. Here you go. Thanks. Andy Christensen? She says she should go first. I'm not gonna get in the middle of that. It might, it might wreck our ability to ski in their fields, so I think. And, and there's Erin. So Andy, could you go on hold for a second? Erin has come out of the kitchen. And Erin, can you get a mic? No. Yeah, Erin, who's in charge of the food for today. Thank you very much. She wanted to say a couple of words since we were able to grab her out of the kitchen. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, what's your timeline looking like?
For having lunch?
Yes. Like, how much more business do you need to get through?
You know, I'm gonna say, knowing what I hear is coming, maybe a half an hour or so.
That's good to know. Okay, so my little announcement is, if you haven't bought a ticket, or if you haven't brought something, you can still buy a ticket for $5. The desk is out there. There'll be somebody manning the desk after Town Meeting. Also, we have a little order of business about the potluck meal, which is that it's been $5 for a really long time, which in this day and age doesn't really reflect what others are putting in if you bring a dish. So you can't really buy a meal for $5 anymore. The suggestion is to kind of level the playing field, is to make it by donation. Suggested donation of eight to $10, but still pay what you can for those who, you know, still want to go with the $5. But to make it more equitable, you know, opening up the, the top there to be a donation. And then whatever we have left over, go to a charity in East Montpelier. So think about that. I'm surveying the crowd. If, if that's something that people feel like reflects our, our economic reality here in East Montpelier, great. If no, then we go back to the $5. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Erin. Back to Andy Christensen, who had the floor. Pardon me?
Man United will never be defeated.
So I could, so Ellen and I can still ski in the field if we don't. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to report for the East Montpelier Emergency Preparedness Committee. This committee was formed in response to the December storm that had an extended power outage that left people scratching their heads about what to do. There were no generators to buy locally. They wanted to know if they should be heading to New York State to find generators, but they didn't know when their power was coming back. So a couple of years later, we're still going. The Select Board has authorized hiring of a new emergency management director. Not that we weren't pleased with the current one, but he has a little on his plate. Thank you, Seth. And if you're interested, there are job descriptions in the hallway. They're yellow. We have some interested people, and I hope that anyone else who's interested will let us know. There's a sign-up sheet. We are excited about this new position and also about the prospect of having a roadmap come the next emergency. Hopefully, it won't be in the near, terribly near future, because that'll give us more time. But during that December storm, Callis had a roadmap that you could report if your road wasn't closed. So it was very helpful for local residents as well as fire department and emergency personnel. So thank you, and sign up if you're interested in learning more about this committee and even joining it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Andy, you have the floor. We need a microphone for Mr. Christensen. Here comes Paige.
Mr. Moderator, before I say anything, I think I should say that it's not every day I get upstaged by both my daughter and my wife. And I will do my darndest to keep, do my darndest to keep you skiing on our fields back of the house. I know this is hard to believe, but this grandfather was a child once. It was back sixty-three years ago in what's now the Town Clerk's Office in third grade. We used to march from the school down to the East Village Cemetery. And there, we sang patriotic songs to those who'd given their lives and freedom for this country. Of course, with the smell of lilacs wafting in the air, my main concern at that time was seeing Memorial Day as a gateway to summer vacation and getting out of school and hanging. So those words that we sang to America the Beautiful and other songs weren't that important to me, because after all, I wanted to get out of school and have my summer vacation. But now, seeing what is happening around me, seeing a president who mocks our veterans and calls those who sacrifice their lives as suckers and losers, who unilaterally cancels appropriations, agencies, and actions by Congress, which until six weeks ago were called laws, who is eager to destroy Medicaid, Medicare, and cause countless deaths and suffering, who pursues an alliance with Russia, North Korea, and Belarus to promote dictatorships around the world, and supports Putin in attacking our allies in NATO, the words of America the Beautiful are the most gut-wrenching and powerful words imaginable. They speak of liberty in law and of heroes proved in liberating strife, who more than self, their country loved, and mercy more than life. Today, there's a lot of fear. Fear of deportation, fear of losing one's job, fear of violence, fear of an uninhabitable planet for our grandchildren. fear of an uninhabitable planet for our grandchildren, fear of losing one's home or healthcare, fear of speaking out, even fear of words. The words which I have carefully chosen and not shied away from in this resolution are words fascism and Hitler. Increasingly, it's increasingly clear that what we are witnessing is fascism. There is a near consensus on this from military generals, historians, and political figures from both parties. I'd like to just quote Governor Pritzker, who addressed in his State of the State address in Illinois a few weeks ago. And he says, "I have just one question, what comes next? After we've discriminated against, deported, or disparaged all the immigrants and the gay and lesbian and transgender people, the developmentally disabled, the women and the minorities, once we've ostracized our neighbors and betrayed our friends, after that, when the problems we started with are still there staring us in the face, what comes next? All the atrocities of human history lurk in the answer to that question. And if we don't want to repeat history, then for God's sake in this moment, we better be strong enough to learn from it." It took the Nazis one month, three weeks, two days, eight hours, and 40 minutes to dismantle a constitutional republic. All I'm saying is when the five-alarm fire starts to burn, every good person better be ready to man a post with a bucket of water if you want to stop it from raging out of control." Yeah, that's what he said in his State of the State address. I'd just finish up by saying that this is a time that we need to be fearless. We need to be brave. And in fact, we've sworn to do so. Each of us in this room have had to take a freeman's oath. We're one of three states that requires such. And the words in that freeman's oath is that, and it's kind of convoluted, but it says, "You solemnly swear or affirm that whenever you give your vote or suffrage touching any matter that concerns the state of Vermont, you will do it so as in your conscience. You shall judge who will most conduce to the best good of the same as established by the Constitution without fear or favor of any person."
Thank you.
I should say, I have copies of the resolution, probably enough for every other person here, so would they want to distribute that?
You want to read it? Want to read it? Want it read? Pardon. Andy, you're shuffling all those papers, I should have had you up here, but if you have. This is a resolution.
Yes.
And are you, and do you want to stand here and read it?
Could.
Okay.
This is a resolution relating to the overreach of presidential power. Whereas the town of East Montpelier is the final resting place for 35 Revolutionary War soldiers who fought against an authoritarian English king, is a town that fought against racism by sending 136 soldiers to fight in the Union Army in the Civil War, and is a town that went to war against fascism during World War II. And whereas federal programs support East Montpelier agriculture and forestry projects, assist town road maintenance and flood recovery, and all these funds are in jeopardy because of a president violating laws passed by Congress. And whereas Vermont nonprofits and other businesses are being closed, increasing the number of unemployed Vermonters is a direct result of illegal executive orders and Doge Department of Government efficiency activities. And whereas many of the sitting president's actions suggest similarities with the rise of Hitler in the 1930s by pursuing total executive power, repeating Hitler's rhetoric, and by threatening allies and neighboring nations. And whereas the president supports the Russian dictator Vladimir Putin, echoes Russian propaganda, and is working against Ukraine while undermining our alliance with Europe and NATO. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of East Montpelier condemns these moves towards authoritarianism and fascism by the federal government of the United States of America and calls upon Congress to resist any effort to give exclusive power to the executive branch in setting budgets or assisting fascist regimes elsewhere in the world. And be it further resolved that the town of East Montpelier calls upon our local and state leaders to resist all presidential executive orders or acts which violate the Constitution of the United States. And be it further resolved that this resolution be sent to our congressional delegation, to the Vermont Governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Speaker of the House, the Chair of the Vermont Republican and Democratic Parties, and the leaders of the National Republican and Democratic Committees.
Thank you, Andy. Before we have any discussion or questions, or if there's a motion for the resolution, please note that under Vermont state law, as this came under other business, so it wasn't petitioned to be on the warning, and it wasn't placed on the warning by the Select Board, no binding action can take place with respect to anything approved under other business. And the statute even says, "And the moderators shall so rule." Anyway. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution, knowing that it is not binding on the Select Board or the Town Clerk? Your name? Selena Martin, yes. Is there a second? Barry Ruffinot back there? Any questions or discussions regarding the proposed resolution that comes up article, under Article 15? Charles? Charles Johnson, please, thank you.
Yeah, Charles, excuse me, Charles Johnson. When you say it's not binding, what happens to it?
It's asked to be sent to our delegations and others. And if the Select Board wants on its own volition to do that, it can do it. And they can request the Town Clerk to do it, and the Town Clerk could do it, perhaps, as an appointee. But it means it's not binding, so I'll give you an example. It said, "And we appropriate the sum of $1 to cover mailing." We cannot do that. So it's up to the Select Board to send that forward if it chooses.
So we will know if it's been acted upon or not?
We would know probably from the minutes of a Select Board meeting, I would suggest. Yes. Rick Barstow?
Rick Barstow. Is there any way that the townspeople can direct the Select Board to send that along?
No.
No.
Not in a binding manner. You could say, "Would you kindly send that along?" And the Select Board can choose to do that.
They can choose to do that.
Yes, yeah, but you can't direct them.
But we can put it on our agenda.
There you go.
We will put it on our agenda.
Answer from the Chair.
Thank you. I just want to say, even though it can't be legally acted upon, our vote can be counted, reported by the press. So regardless of how the Select Board chooses to act on it, and we'll find out how many people in town would like that to happen, it still has a lot of validity based on what we choose to do next. So thank you, Andy Christensen.
Any other questions or discussion before we vote on the resolution presented by Andy Christensen under Article 15? Ed Black, Ed Deegan, Ed Black Deegan. Here comes the mic. Thank you.
Just some input and perspective on this from me, my personal view. This has been a long time, headaches have been a long time coming. I'm flashing back to a galaxy far, far away, Patterson, New Jersey, in a jazz bar, having a discussion with a friend's and one of my friend's brother, who happened to be an attorney for the ACLU at the time. And it was back in the late 70s, Ronald Reagan was on the rise, Jimmy Carter was battling, you know, gas lines. Some of you remember the gas lines, probably worse in New Jersey than up here, but. But back then, I had a discussion with my friend's brother, and I pointed out that we were heading to 1984. And if you haven't read the book recently, reread it. We have Newspeak, we have Truth Social, which is nothing but lies. We have, they started back then talking about entitlement programs. I'm sorry, Social Security and Medicare is not an entitlement. It is programs that we all, probably everyone in here, has probably paid into their entire lives. I'm still working and still paying it. So this is a matter of semantics going way, way back, but we need to step up and end some of these problems now. And hopefully, how bad things are right now or heading is going to put us in the right direction. But Andy, thanks a lot, that was a well-done thing.
Any other questions or discussions regarding the resolution? Marion? Marion Hanson has the floor.
Does this work?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to tell a really short story. I grew up in Montreal, in Quebec, in Canada. And in case there are people here who don't understand the reach of the federal government of the United States, as a four-year-old in 1953, I'm a little older than you, Andy, I was at a nursery school that I loved. They had a rabbit and birds, so what's not to love? And my mother took me out and put me in another nursery school that I didn't like at all. And it happened to be at the time that my younger brother died of a virus. He died in a day. And so it stuck with me and I was always upset about it. And when I was in my 40s, I said, "Mom, why did you take me out of that nursery school that I loved?" And she said, "I got a letter from the federal government of the United States saying that if I did not take you out of that communist nursery school, I would not be allowed to cross the border and visit my brothers in New York. So I took you out." That was the reach in 1953, when some of us were still on party lines. Imagine the reach of this government with the technology that we have today.
Any other questions or discussions regarding Article 15 and the resolution presented by Mr. Christensen? Charlie. Charlie Wanzer has the floor.
Hi, yeah, my name's Charlie Wanzer. I would propose that, yeah, we accept this resolution. I like it a lot. I think that it goes beyond kind of a partisan statement. It doesn't, to me, say like, this is a gathering of Democratic voters here versus Republicans. I think it's, you know, the current situation is like so kind of anti-democratic and beyond parties that I would encourage our, you know, Republican neighbors here to support it also. And when we go forth, you know, we try to explain that, you know, these times are a little bit different. The silencing of the courts, the bullying, the name-calling. It's just kind of unprecedented. And, you know, I'm willing to discuss public policy about taxes and Medicare with people on the other side of the political fence, whatever that, you know, looks like and feels like. But, yeah, things are a little bit different right now. So I'd say let's, you know, try to speak with one voice, not, if possible, alienate, you know, our neighbors here, or our friends, or our, you know, fellow townspeople. Does that kind of make sense? Maybe, thanks. While they have the mic, just a related observation from the town report, which is always so marvelous, is that I think on town, maybe on page four, where it lists all the town officers, kind of relatedly and a little bit curiously, it lists the town justices of the peace by political party. Some of our JPs are listed as either independents or they've got a D next to their name. I'm not quite sure I know what that means. But I don't see anywhere else in the report where, you know, we refer to Seth as, you know, an independent, or a Republican, or a Democrat. But on page four, under the JPs, it does have us listed, you know, as independents or Republicans or Democrats. And I think that's just kind of relatedly curious. So here's the mic.
Okay. Rosie may have an answer, and Ruben has his hand up to perhaps Charles' question regarding that designation for justices of the peace.
The reason that justices of the peace are listed by party is so that we can ensure fairness in elections. If two justices of the peace were to bring a ballot to you at your home because of a disability, we would send one of each party. That's the reason.
Next to the Governor and Lieutenant Governor and the Secretary of State, the only other elected officers mentioned in the Vermont Constitution are the justices of the peace. Think about that. Ruben, you had your hand up, please.
I'm just gonna keep this brief. It feels very, this is a very scary time for a lot of people. And the division is the game at the end of the day. So please, reach out to your neighbors, talk to your neighbors, especially the neighbors who you may not politically agree with, because the amount of common ground that we all have is so much more than the amount of disagreement that we have. And the amount of disagreement is being used so incredibly effectively as a wedge between people, friends, neighbors, families. So, that said, I want to point out that there is literally nothing controversial in this resolution. It simply says, "We call upon the federal government of the United States to follow the law." This should not be a matter of debate or controversy. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I call on Charles Johnson again? Dave Connor, you want to say a couple of things? I think you, if I don't wreck it.
I would just like to remind young people that have not been at a town meeting before that I was one-
that I was once a Rube from New York State that came here and sabbatic, and I didn't know anything about a town meeting. And so the first year I was here, we came to this town meeting, and boy, were there arguments. I was amazed. I said, "I thought I was a kind of a radical. These people are arguing from every kind of the spectrum, and they all respect each other. I'm thinking I may wind up coming back to this place." And so I just want to say, we've been here before, we've done this, and this is a proud space, so I'm just very pleased that we're still at it.
Charles Johnson, unless anyone else would like to speak before we take a vote, non-binding as it may be in a strict sense.
What Andy's done is a brave, brave thing, and we're going to need bravery in this years to come. It takes standing up and speaking out, saying words that may offend, but if we don't do it, what's going to happen? In my other lives, I was, I've been a 20-year Coast Guard veteran, four years active duty, 16 in the reserves. I took oaths. I followed those oaths. I went through the Vietnam era. What's happening now is unconscionable, illegal, immoral, and wrong. Thank you, Andy, for your bravery.
Are you ready for the question under other business? All those in favor of the resolution kindly indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have adopted Mr. Christensen's Still on Article 15, under other business, that may properly come before the body. Yes, over there, Catherine?
Okay.
So we're recognizing Catherine Clark. Correct. And Nona? Esther?
Okay.
Thank you.
As Ruben Bennett said, this is a time when we have to pay attention to our safety net. And as so many people have eloquently suggested, part of our safety net is one another. Now Catherine is going to read a resolution that I hope, as has been suggested, we can jump back to those times, because we're there now, when this town had a lot of difficult, worse-than-arguments, bitter, heart-wrenching arguments about Conservation Commission. It was very difficult at that time. We've done it before, as has been suggested. We can do it again. We can reenact, I hope, the safety net of each other. And in the spirit of doing that, Catherine has written with me a resolution that we hope everyone, Republicans, Democrats, people of every stripe, could agree with. Catherine Clark, Catherine with a K. Yes?
I will hold it for you. Would you rather go up here? It's got to be close. Should I do it?
I'm going to come on this side. How's that?
I live in the 18th century, forgive me. I move the following resolution, I move the following resolution be adopted. How's my volume?
Great.
Whereas, Eastmont Pili residents are against government waste, and whereas we believe our local, state, and national governments should be no bigger than necessary, and whereas we want our governments to treat all people with compassion and humility, and whereas we are dismayed at the haste and indiscriminate aim with which the Trump administration is reducing the federal government. Now therefore be it resolved that the voters of Eastmont Pili urge the president to be conservative and deliberate in his efforts to reduce government waste, and be it further resolved that American government employees who work on our behalf be treated with honor and justice, not disrespect, and that all terminations of such workers be made according to existing contracts and agreements. And be it further resolved that the voters of Eastmont Pili urge the president to employ a scalpel, not a chainsaw, to trim government programs and departments, and be it further resolved that the voters of Eastmont Pili request the town clerk to mail a copy of this resolution to President Donald Trump, Senator Bernie Sanders, Senator Peter Welch, Representative Becca Bound, and Governor Phil Scott.
Thank you, Catherine. Is there a, Catherine made a motion for the adoption of that resolution. Is there a second to that motion? It looks like Selena Moore, sorry, Selena Moore made a second. Again, this is Article 15, the directive, not directive, the operative language was request. So again, this is non-binding. However, are there any other questions, discussions regarding this resolution by Ms. Clark before us? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor of Ms. Clark's motion under Article 15, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have adopted Ms. Clark's resolution. Continuing with Article 15, I think Rachel Grossman had her hand up with respect to other business. Can we get a microphone back to Rachel on the back wall by the blue wrestling pad?
I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Nona said about relying on each other. We've been very serious, and this is so serious and scary, and I, for one, am very grateful for the community that I have here in Eastmont Pili. And I look around at so many faces that I know for so many years, and know that we all show up for each other, and that it just, in these times that are so scary and so difficult, it's just really nice to know that we have this community. And then, in the spirit of, just totally unrelated, in the spirit of thanking people, I'm looking at Flor standing over there and realizing that she has served on the school board for I don't know how long, and that is such a thankless job, so I wanted to thank her.
Anything else under other business? And Erin, Erin's giving me this. So Erica Zimmerman, please kindly.
A very quick announcement, if you will. If you were stirred at all by the idea of doing something together in this time, it also seems like it's a really good time to go back 30 years, which was right when Kevin and I moved here, and we, one of the first people we met was Jean Kate. And one of Jean Kate's many initiatives was to start, and other people I know too, to start the signpost, and to fund the signposts, and to bring us all together to have a community event. Our rally day has been defunct, if you will, sleeping for 10 years, something like that, eight years. It seems like it's time to bring back some form of community event or events. I've heard from quite a few people with interest, interest in a monthly event, interest in an annual event, interest in a moving, walking event, interest in a eating event, interest in a laughing event, all sorts of things. If you are interested in getting together to talk about such a concept, please be in touch with me. I'll put something in front porch forum so you see my email. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Anything else before we conclude? And thanks once again to our pages for their microphone work.
I just wanted to mention that on our road, a lot of the ash trees are going to be cut, and it seems that this is probably the way it has to happen, but I also feel it's sad to be cutting them preemptively when there's, some of them are small. And I know it's going to affect the look and the beauty of our road, and I just wanted to mention that. I don't have a solution, and I understand that it's probably the thing that's going to save money and save problems down the road, but I also am sad that it's, that we have to sort of give up before we've even started a fight, and it's a tree that represents healing, so I feel that that's a sad situation.
Thank you. Anything else under Article Business? Article 15, yes.
I just had a question about the second resolution, and I understand that it is an unbinding resolution, but it resolves that the voters of Eastmont Pili request the town clerk to mail a copy of this to a list of national officials supposed to be representing us. So I have a question for the moderator. Can I make a motion that this is taken up by the Select Board? Is that necessary to be done? What's, what are the steps of this resolution?
Good question. So it's been adopted, it becomes part of the official town record. I believe that the, our capable town clerk will see that and perhaps consult with the Select Board, and it's in their discretion as elected and an appointed official whether or not to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question, though. Anything else before we conclude with, for lunch? Zach Sullivan, right back there.
Sorry, just a quick response to Renee's question, and I think this has also been percolating around with the, with the nature of non-binding resolutions. You can show up to things. You can show up to Select Board and say, "Hey, did you do the thing you said you were going to do?" There are, there are things that are less formal that have, and as someone who's served on a couple of these, a couple of boards, you know, these less formal things can be really effective. So don't think that, you know, if we don't, if you don't, you know, pass a motion at town meeting, you're doing nothing. You can always just ask, "Hey, did this thing happen?"
Anything else under Article 15, other business, before we conclude? It's great to see everybody today. I will take a moderator's discretion to, once again, as I mentioned at the beginning, let's think about 1761 and what those first white settler colonists did to keep themselves independent from the king. Anything else before we adjourn?
Listening to the conversation today, it's, you know, it hits really hard. I'm an immigrant, you know, and I grew up in an authoritarian government. So one of the most important things we can do to support one another is support public education and both stay engaged federally, statewide, and locally. That's where our kids are, you know, learn their civic and political rights, and public education provides the basis for our democracy, and sometimes we take that for granted. So thank you for being here. It's a privilege to serve you, and that's all I want to say.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Is there a motion? Mr. Maury moves to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Mr. Dworkin. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.